Yes.
Josh and Mark. Chief McNeil, Chief Wigg. Not sure who this one is. Rich is on. It's 5:30, so I called to order this meeting for Tuesday, October 13th. Carl, would you start off by giving us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Present.
Ronain.
Present.
Lunsman.
Present.
Rife.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Reinbold.
Present.
Langer.
Present.
Rux.
Present.
Mayor Shawman.
Present.
Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, I'll ask for a motion to approve last week's minutes for the council meeting of October 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Carl, as we have two members on Zoom, would you please give me a roll call vote?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson. Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. No one has spoke. I asked to speak at the open forums. We'll move along to old business. First, we have ordinance 201001 supplementing the 2020 budget for various activities and expenses. Carl spent some time explaining that to us in detail last week. This will be for the possible second reading and final adoption. Carl, is there anything new?
Thank you, Mayor. No changes since first reading. Then move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Reinbold. Does anyone have any questions for Carl before we take the second reading? Otherwise, Carl, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the consent calendar. We've got two items of routine city business, a license and a request for street use. Can I get a motion to approve those two consent calendar items?
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Ronain. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote on the consent calendar, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we'll move along to new business. We'll start with ordinance 201002 amending Chapter 2, Administration of the City Code regarding meetings of the council and city boards. Possible first reading and ordinance 201002. We had a bit of a discussion of that in a work session a week or so ago. Joe, what can you tell us about this ordinance?
I'll start off, and the city attorney will add to some of this because we kind of tag teamed the work session. We'll do the same here. This had a lot to do with meeting protocol, meeting frequency, telephone meetings. So after the work session, the direction seemed to be the three meetings. As long as it was three regular meetings, that was the minimum that the council was comfortable with. Went back and looked at how did that fit versus some work sessions. I believe if we skipped that second week, it does look pretty good from a work schedule. A lot of the board meetings are the first week, and this was a perfect example. There's board meetings up until Thursday at noon. And then if we're trying to get them on the agenda in a hurry, it really slows down the process and makes our meetings a little bit, you know, the possibility of missing something critical. So that's a good week to skip and give us a little more time. And then we'll also put that staff meeting in between those board meetings and gives us some things. One of the biggest concerns was not slowing down planning and zoning. So it's always the third and looking at the schedule will catch the first and the fourth, or the fourth and the first, excuse me, just like we always do. So that wouldn't do anything. So I think that covers most of the bases. An interesting thing in talking with the staff, a couple of things were, you know, how will we do this? How will we do that? And all the things. And one of the comments was, well, we have all the tools necessary to do it. We just kind of have to rearrange them a little bit. So I think the staff's in pretty good shape. But something that came up a little bit, and I just want to say this, that was, I think, a good statement to say to you and then also for folks listening to the meeting is, the staff, I think, sometimes feels a little pushed. So if you're saying you need a special event permit or some sort of permit, you're not trying to turn in a piece of paper to beat the clock to get on the next council meeting deadline. You're actually, you're bringing in something that's starting a very thorough administrative and review process of which the final step might be approval at a city council meeting, might not be. So I think this will help us to kind of line those up a little bit and maybe, I don't want to say fix the problems, but enable the staff to communicate a little bit better of why maybe something comes in the first week, why it's not the third week, and it actually gives us the time we need. So there was a lot of concern about that is that sometimes people feel that they're turning it in to get on the council meeting agenda. That's actually the last step. So I think that's probably the biggest obstacle in communicating that, but we'll set up some strategies there. So that was my part and all that we're on, kind of take off with the other two sections.
Thank you, Joe. Councilmembers, I placed on each of your seats the redline version of the ordinance and also a sheet of paper that has the three relevant statutes regarding teleconferences. And I wanted to drill down into the redline changes. You'll see in the first portion where you are changing regular meetings, we have language in there. At such place as otherwise provided upon public notice, that's at the bottom of page one of the ordinance. And that's in there to allow for the teleconference change if that is adopted. And then, of course, later on in that same section, 2-5-4 deals with the first, third, and fourth Mondays. You then hop down to Section 2-58, rules of procedure will now be rules of order. And what it's saying is that the council will adopt and may amend from time to time rules and order of business. And that could be done by motion. Right now, by ordinance, you'll see that the council is required to use Roberts Rules of Order. And I personally am asking the council to go away from that. And no matter what happens, if there are any changes to this particular ordinance or if it gets voted down, I'll be coming back to you with a request that we at least get rid of the Roberts Rules of Order as your rules of order. And then I'll take you to the second part of the ordinance, which deals with teleconference meetings. And it seems like a simple thing to do, especially as we've been doing Zoom meetings and we're in the middle of COVID. But conducting a council meeting by teleconference is very difficult. And the language that you're seeing in Section 2-59, I've labored on it more than I care to admit to try to pull up something that would structurally make sense for the council. And I'm still not sure, at the end of the day, the mechanics of doing a teleconference meeting. But a lot of the work is put on our host, which will be, at this point, designated as our finance officer and/or his designee, because he will need help in hosting a teleconference meeting. But I had provided the council with the statutes that we see now under our open meetings law for allowing teleconference meetings. And by the way, just as an aside, if you look at 1-25-1.5, that's the statute that requires that a member answer present at roll call. It's just interesting that they would drill down so far that they would actually require a member to say how they're going to show that they're present. And then also that each vote in an official meeting held by teleconference shall be taken by roll call. So we've been doing this for that reason. But then also, 1-25-1.6 sets up how the teleconference would be done. And it requires that the public have an opportunity to listen to and, where appropriate, participate in the call. And that's where it gets very difficult. The definitions at 1-25-12, you'll see that there is a definition for teleconference at sub four. And in our definitions at Section 2-59, I've made a slight change to our definition of a teleconference to say that it does not include email or similar network messaging platforms. So under no circumstance would the city council or any of the boards be allowed to conduct their meetings by email. That's just simply not allowed by teleconference, so I wanted to make that clear. But I wanted to make sure that you folks were aware of the changes that were made. And I'm prepared to answer any questions you might have about the redline changes or the new teleconference section.
So effectively, it doesn't really change the way that we've been handling things as of spring?
With.
Teleconferencing in terms of the definition and the way that it will be?
That's a very good question. You can appear by teleconference or you can have a teleconference meeting. None of these have been teleconference meetings. We've had people appearing, and we have two councilmembers, Remley and Rife, appearing by teleconference. But this is in no way a teleconference meeting. And what that means is that essentially there's an agreement that nobody would have to be present at a physical location for a noticed teleconference meeting. Now, there has to be the ability for the public to somehow participate.
That's what I was going to ask.
And so what we would anticipate, and this is where it gets really hard to do these, because obviously we've got documents that we're seeing on screens and things like that. You folks are looking at hard documents. But we would have to have the ability for the public to maybe come to a physical location. It might very well be here, to at least be here during a teleconference meeting.
In order to engage.
What's that?
In order to engage if they wanted to or here at live. Okay, so are we, as a council, obligated to have a way to provide that? Because currently, we're just depending on Hub City Radio to just do it for us.
Right, and that.
A person can show up here.
Right, but I mean, if we went full teleconference where none of us were present because, let's say.
They could still show up.
Something happened. That would be the plan, was for them to show up here.
And I want to make clear, too, that a teleconference doesn't necessarily mean that they all get to participate in the video. If they were listening in by telephone, that would satisfy the open meeting requirement.
Okay.
And so we've talked about this, and former city manager Lynn Lander was really, really opposed to just going this way because it was so difficult to set it up. We just weren't technologically set up yet to do that. And so what we're looking at is Zoom, as you've noticed, has its limitations as well. Or maybe we're not quite sure of all of its capacity. We haven't quite worked out all the capability of Zoom. But is that the kind of a video conference platform we want to use for a teleconference? These are things, once you pass this, we still have a lot of work to put together an actual teleconference meeting.
So I feel like the push has been kind of going the other direction, at least since Mr. Guy's been hired here. Is there a reason that we would consider disbanding altogether and everyone just being on internet?
If it came down, quite frankly, what if somebody in this room was diagnosed tomorrow as positive? We might all have to quarantine for a little while. So maybe the next meeting, we would be in quarantine. Then would we be able to call in? So that's really been the thought behind this. You're right, we kind of brought the people back together. We're using some social distancing here. But we're seeing now that as the pandemic increases a little bit in our community and surrounding communities, the question gets to be is, what if we aren't here all able to be here? So that would be the case. I like having people in the room. I think that's what we want to have. You know, hopefully not going to everybody out, but this allows it rather than just canceling a meeting.
And if I could add, you'll note that the beginning qualifier to subsection B of Section 2-54 uses the phrase "when necessary." So it's assumed that a hosted teleconference or teleconference meeting will not be the norm. It'll just be when circumstances require.
Are you aware, has any other community in this state adopted such a?
Well, if I could add, during the governor's executive orders, there was one executive order that actually encouraged cities and everybody to use teleconference. But then it also said, but you still have to follow the law. Well, I've given you the law. You've got the three statutes there. And in order to do the teleconference, it's almost impossible for a city council that's looking at documents and allowing an opportunity for the public to participate. It was probably impossible for them to do that without violating their own ordinances. So we're trying to get to where we can do this in a way that has to abide by the law, which I think this language would allow that to go forward, and you would not be in any way violating any law. So the reason, if cities have been doing it, I don't know. But I would bet that very few have been doing it legally.
Since, even though we don't have a lot of people that come and speak here, but we give them the opportunity to come here to the last, literally the last minute before the meeting, how would we set something like that up? Or how would we make them, if they say can't come here personally, they can only be on, whether they're homebound, they're quarantined, whatever, what do we do to give them the opportunity to participate in that manner?
There's a notice requirement that'll go out as part of our standard public notice and agenda. That notice will always give that information as to how it is that they could participate. So if it's a Zoom invitation, if it's a call-in number, it'll tell them a place where they can go to.
To tell us that they want to say something.
Yeah. Another thing that we've been talking about is a requirement that if somebody does want to participate in the public comment, the open forum portion of the meeting, that they would need to notify the finance officer ahead of time, give their contact information, let the finance officer make that call to set that up so that they would be able to call in and participate. And I just want to make it clear to you again, as I've talked about before, this is your opportunity to do the business of the city. It's not necessarily an opportunity for anybody to show up and talk whenever they want. So in order for somebody to come and comment, they have to be permitted to do that. So we would arrange for them, when that section of the meeting comes up, we could have placed a call, for example, to them, allow them to make their comment to the council and whoever else wants to make their comments. And then otherwise, during the course of the meeting, they would only be able to comment if invited and allowed by the presiding officer.
So we could set something up similar to like classes on the internet, where they give a section where you can make comments or send a message and a moderator either decides this can go to maybe the mayor, go to whoever, and they decide if it becomes part of the meeting or doesn't become part of the meeting? Are we, is that a possibility?
It's possible that that could be part of it. I mean, there are just so many different ways of trying to look at how that comment can be done. Does it need to be public verbal commentary? Can it be written comments that are read by, you know, the presiding officer or the host? I don't know. We're still working through that process. But we know that we're just going to lose some of that flexibility in a hosted teleconference. You just will.
So the way that you understand it today, we have to have a quorum physically in the room. And then if anyone is extraniously on the Zoom call, that's great. They vote to.
That's correct. Today, we need to have a quorum always physically present. And that's why we weren't able to do the teleconferences from the beginning.
Back to what Joe said, if five of us happen to be quarantined, we couldn't have a meeting.
Couldn't have a meeting.
But based on the state's Department of Health, if we remain six feet from one another for periods of greater than 15 minutes, like that would never be a requirement imposed by the state. So the way that we're situated in here, unless we.
What I'm talking about, we all have lives out of here. If we get exposed at work, we get exposed at home or whatever, and five of us happen to be exposed or get COVID, then we're stuck at home. That's kind of what my point is.
I understand.
And that really is the point of this statute, is to be able to do it if we have to.
It's never a bad idea just to have.
Nobody really wants to do it.
Yeah.
And so, question for you then, Ron, in terms of the Rules of Order, Section 258, this doesn't set in stone the rules of order in which you presented earlier. That'll be a vote for another time.
Correct. What would happen sequentially is if this ordinance or something like it is approved, we go through the effective date, which is 20 days after publication. At that point, then I would come to the council with a recommendation as to what you should do for Rules of Order. And right now, it'd be very close to what I presented to you folks a while ago as the handbook.
And then in terms of, should this pass next week with the second reading, when would the three meeting that would go into effect immediately at that point?
Well, it would be 20 days following publication. Mary usually publishes these the Thursday after the Monday meeting, so roughly 25 days from next Monday.
Mayor, I have a quick question, just for clarification.
Councilman Rife, go ahead.
Joe, I'm looking at the color-coded calendar here. I'm just curious, on the rare months where there's five Mondays, do you have this meeting the first, third, and fourth, and then again, not the fifth? And starting over the following month, is that correct?
That's correct.
Before the next meeting, can we get like maybe a next year's calendar? I know we can all do it, but with, when the like boards meet, kind of like what you did with just the last three months?
If you go, should be able to scroll, and it should be the next page.
Nope, there it is. See, I can't rotate it.
Yeah, you have the schedule of the entire '20 and '21. I did just '20, so that assuming whenever we would start, so we could see that. But yeah, it gets it all the way through the next year.
Right now, we're looking at, that would be three or four months where we'd only have, where we'd be missing one Monday.
Correct.
Any other questions for either the city manager or city attorney, or any other points to be made? Well, then, we will, I get a motion to approve the first reading here, then.
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Lunsman for this first reading ordinance, 201002. Carl, can you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
No.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got a resolution to establish a consolidated Board of Equalization pursuant to SDCL 101166, possible approval of the resolution and to designate someone on this board as a member and also another person as an alternate to begin serving in April to May 2021. So I didn't see anyone that was going to be taking point. Is that a Ron thing here?
I asked Carl before the meeting started, I think typically we had had the mayor as the. As the.
Sacrificial lamb.
As the first person.
Sure, and I was going to actually ask, because I've been attending the county equalization board meetings. This is to establish a consolidated Board of Equalization. Is that a separate entity, then?
It's exactly what it is. It's both. It is a, it's a separate entity, yeah.
Sounds good. Well, if no one else is going to fight me for it, I would continue to serve as the designee. But if someone else would rather, it would hurt my feelings.
Yeah, I was going to make the motion, but I guess we need an alternate as well.
I could serve as an alternate.
I would move to adopt the resolution with the mayor and Councilman Rux as the alternate.
Second that.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronain and a second from Councilman Johnson to designate myself as the member and Councilman Rux as the alternate member to serve on the board. Any questions or anything else to add to that? Otherwise, Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Remley.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Rux.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the Brown County Dispatch Center console replacement consideration and possible approval to pay 50% of the cost, not to exceed $35,000, for the replacement of four consoles at the Brown County Dispatch Center. Joe, you're going to tell us something of that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is one of those interesting things that has evolved over the last few months. As you all know, the county operates a dispatch center for all emergency calls throughout the city and the county. It's a cooperative board that runs that between city and county representatives. There is an E911 fund that supports some of the operations, and then the budget is split between the city and the county funds, which sometimes is a little problematic, but I think here it's worked pretty well. But if you'll recall, the dispatch center was in apparently a much smaller room in the sheriff's department. And a few years ago, it moved to a much larger room. But the best example I can give you from when I saw it is they moved from a small square room to a large rectangular room. And so the equipment is for a much smaller space. So they have a room this size, and they have four dispatchers literally crammed in that corner over there. So with COVID, there were some concerns about the distancing, keeping folks safe. And that is a really important part of our public safety response system. So some discussions started. I think Ken picked up on some things throughout the state. Could the CARES fund money be used to improve the dispatch centers? And fortunately, the answer to that's been yes. There's been several other dispatch systems throughout the state that have been working on this and buying these new consoles, so to speak. And it's kind of integrated furniture that ties everything together. And this will enable spacing and will utilize that space and keep our dispatch center functioning. As you'll see from the attached, to replace the four units at $70,000. And that's using a quote that was given to several other dispatch centers as well. So an opportunity here. The county has asked, they've committed purchasing it, asking that we will reimburse half, and we'll be able to turn that in as a CARES Act expense. So we believe this is a great opportunity to really do something we have to do in the future, anyway. But it's the right thing to do to keep our dispatch center functioning.
To add a little bit of context to, the city participates to the tune of above $400,000 per year. Aside from that, just general budget, and that's what usually would cover these type of expenses. They'd have to budget it out in their annual budget. So it's a little bit of a windfall that the federal government is willing to pay for this.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Ronain and a second from Councilman Reinbold. Does anyone have any questions?
So are the old 911 centers outdated, then? Are they still functional and we're just going to get new ones to space them out?
There is some function. They are perhaps later in life. But one of the things that has been talked a little bit about is utilizing those to perhaps, as equipment doesn't necessarily age out, but ages a little bit, is this an opportunity to talk about a backup 911 center in a different building, perhaps? That what if an emergency happens, a natural disaster hits, do we have a backup? So I think this will lead to further discussions in that as well.
Because we still have a room down in the police station that was built for that.
Correct, and that is one of the sites we've talked about as a good place for a backup.
Carl, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux.
Aye.
Langer.
Aye.
Reinbold.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Rife.
Aye.
Lunsman.
Aye.
Ronain.
Aye.
Remley.
Aye.
Mayor Shawman.
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the request to make application to the BNSF for the permit agreement, possible approval of $800 application fee to the BNSF for a permit agreement for work within the railroad right of way on State Street. And Robin, you're here. Tell us about that.
It's pretty straightforward. We need to have the check to be able to make the application. So we're asking for the $800 check to be approved so we can move forward with those safety meetings on State Street. so we can move forward with those safety medians on State Street. So not much else to add.
Moved to approve.
So do we want to claim that and take a second? Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Lunsman?
Hey, Robin. Did they put a new crossing in on State Street recently? Or this is going to be last year?
Last fall, they did that. They didn't do Dakota Street though, so that's why we didn't do the medians until after they got those completed. We do have the right, it's interesting, because we do have the right to do the crossing on Dakota Street, because it's a section line road. But State Street is considered to be railroad right-of-way versus our right-of-way. So we, that was not on our radar, and that's why we're doing this kind of late, late in the game.
If you ever have the opportunity, would you please charge them a permit fee if they want to do something on the section line right-of-way?
Yeah.
Would you?
I'll give that a shot.
And are we doing this anticipation of next year's project? Because sometimes a railroad does not move quickly.
Sometimes is an accurate term, yes. Thank you.
Brett just went out and molded their graphs the other day, so I think he's going to send them a, a bill for that.
Good. Let me, let me help price it.
Uh, do we get a motion on that one? We did. Carl, go ahead, give me a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnen?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the request to purchase one high-speed rotary blower for the airport from the Minnesota Department of Transportation purchasing agreement, possible approval to purchase rotary blower from the MNDOT purchasing agreement and authorize a payment of six hundred twenty-six thousand five hundred fifty-one dollars to MB Room upon delivery. And Rich, are you joining us via Zoom here? No, Rich?
We think he's on there.
He was.
He was on there.
He took too long.
He was, but I do not see him on the list of participants.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Little explanation is that this came in, there was, there were some concerns with the bids that came in. They, we rejected those and then are purchasing this off of a bid list. So a little bit extra process to it, but it's good for us.
And the question that I was going to ask this is, is it ninety percent covered by FAA grant money?
I, I believe that's the number.
A majority of the six hundred twenty-six thousand dollars is being paid by someone else. The motion from Councilman Ronain and a second from Councilman Rux. Anything else that anyone might add? All right, well, Carl, would you give me a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnen?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the payment request for the Airport Improvement Projects, AIP. Payment number one, which is twenty-six Master Layout Plan to Helms &amp; Associates for the amount of two thousand fifteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. Number two is payment number two for the Cultural Resource Survey to Metcalf Archaeological for the amount of seventy-nine hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. Payment number twenty-four is Taxiway C to Helms &amp; Associates for the amount of thirty-five thousand seven hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-three cents. Payment number four, which is number twelve, to Taxiway Geometry Project to Helms &amp; Associates, forty-four hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty-nine cents. Then we've got payment number five, which is entitled number three, Snow Removal Equipment Research to Helms &amp; Associates of nineteen hundred forty-five dollars. And the sixth payment is payment number one, the GA Apron Improvements. The design of those is seventy-nine hundred forty-seven dollars and eight cents. Possible approval and authorization to sign those particular payment requests. And is Rich?
I think he's on the phone.
Okay.
Rich, is that you on the phone?
He usually tells us about how far along these projects are, is about the big...
The good news, I can tell you this, I actually went out there Friday. I had a friend coming in and, and while I was waiting, Rich took me out. Most of these are for the current project. They're planning some, some future ones already, but they are ninety, ninety-five percent complete. The Taxiway that was constructed is completed. The Taxiway that's being re, rehabbed a little bit with asphalt and tying all that back together is, is almost complete. There were a few concerns with some, some of the smaller parts, so they're redoing that. But it, it looks really sharp out there and they'll, they'll be done with that project very soon.
Moved to approve all six payment requests. Second.
Got a motion from Councilman Johnson and a second from Councilman Reinbold. Does anyone have any questions for the city manager? Most appraisers of the situation. Carl, give me a roll call vote on those six payment requests, please.
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnen?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got a single payment, payment number six to REDI Construction, possible approval of payment to REDI Construction in the amount of nine hundred fifty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars and ninety cents pending an acceptable and satisfactory completion of the asphalt joint repair and off, uh, asphalt joint repair and to authorize the city manager to sign that pay estimate. Rich is not here. Joe, what can you tell us?
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Welcome to the meeting, Rich. Talking about your nine hundred fifty-seven thousand dollar REDI construction pay estimate. Tell us about that project.
Okay, uh, yeah, I'm not sure what's going on with this phone here, but anyhow. So we had a, a kind of an issue that we were working through when our board meeting commenced last week. However, on last Friday, Batumina's Asphalt did rep, make the proper repairs. I went out again yesterday, looked at it. It looks perfect, so I would recommend taking the pending off and let's, uh, let's pay these guys nine hundred fifty-seven thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars and ninety cents.
I move to approve and without it being a pending payment.
Second.
Remove pending.
So I've got a motion from Councilman Ronain to approve payment and to make the adjustment to this pay request eliminated in terms of the single word pending from the acceptable and satisfactory completion denotation. So, and I've got a second from Councilman Johnson. Carl, would you give me a roll call vote for that, that payment, please?
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnen?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the approval of the bill list for October thirteenth as published in your packets. I get a motion to pay those bills?
So moved.
Second.
A motion from Councilman Rux and a second from Councilman Lunsman. Carl, would you give me a roll call on those bills, please?
Councilmember Remley?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnen?
I will abstain, but the motion does carry. Next, we've got payroll approval for the pay period of September twenty-seventh through October tenth, as well as the city share of Social Security, old age, survivors' insurance, retirement health, and life insurance. Can I get a motion to make the payroll, please?
Moved.
Got a motion from Councilman Ronain and a second from Councilman Reinbold. Carl, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rux?
Aye.
Langer?
Aye.
Reinbold?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Reif?
Aye.
Lunsman?
Aye.
Ronain?
Aye.
Remley?
Aye.
Mayor Shawnen?
Aye, motion does carry. Next, we've got the city managers' report. Joe, take it away.
I just wanted to update you on a few projects. We heard a little bit about the, the airport. You know, the airport is a, a good economic development driver as well of quality of life. And then at the Parks Board meeting last week, the, they went out to Storybook Land. There's been some small improvements there. And also an update on the softball complex, it's nearing completion. I've been making that part of my Sunday drive and it's, it's changing drastically every week. So a week ago, some of the fields had the surface down and now they're all pretty well down and some of the fence posts are going in. So both of those, being our park system, we have a great park, park system with quality of life. The airport, such a nice facility there. So those, those are good things to hear about, those projects going on. And then really just a, a comment, I, I have a lot of discussions about economic development, quality of life, and it seems like lately, I've been getting a lot of calls on that. We talk about things have changed during COVID, but there's still a lot of talk about folks living in, relocating to South Dakota Aberdeen businesses. And with everything going on in our world, it seems like our local economy, there's a lot of interest in it and things are going great. I had a friend in town the other day and was giving him a tour and it was amazing the things I had to say. This wasn't here, or this was just starting when I got here. I've been here almost four months, so it's been fast. So our, our town is definitely thriving and sometimes in, in the hustle of everyday life, we forget that. But it's, it's been some, some interesting reminders for me this past week and I just wanted to share that. That's all, thanks.
I just have one question for Robin. Fifteenth Avenue, it looks like they're getting ready to pave?
Should be paving Thursday and Friday.
Okay, so that could be opened up by the weekend?
Sure.
So, good.
Can I just make one more thing?
Yeah, Councilwoman Langer.
Uh, today, the state opened grants for small businesses in South Dakota. There's four hundred million dollars available. So I strongly encourage any small business owners that are listening to check out those grant programs. They are, they are, if you've lost money from May, or I'm sorry, March until August, but they're very simple and they have to spend that four hundred million dollars by December of this year. So it's a great opportunity for a small business.
Councilwoman Langer, and now the requirement is a loss of twenty-five percent of revenue over the same period in the previous year?
Yes, from twenty nineteen. And it's very simple and the executive director of the retailer says, when in doubt, fill it out.
When in doubt, fill it out? Even if you're not quite at twenty-five percent, maybe you'll still lose some more money, I guess.
Information's at covid.st.gov, is that correct?
Yes, and it's, and it takes you to a link. If anybody has questions, they can email my city council. You might be happy to send them direct links. But yes, they can go to the COVID, the COVID website and very simple one-page info on what they need. It's any, anybody can do it too. You don't need an accountant's information, it's very simple.
Thank you very much, Tiffany.